Next up, we have Amanda Beach Burge for the issue of vaccines, and each speaker will have two minutes.
Good morning. I'm Amanda Beach Burge. I'm from Huntington, West Virginia, in Campbell County. I'm Chair for the Campbell County Democratic Executive Committee, and I ran for West Virginia House District 23. Um, I'm here to talk about um my experiences. Um, I am a product of Campbell County Schools. My son is also enrolled in Campbell County Schools. And I want to thank this board for their continued support of vaccination requirements that are some of the best in the nation. Grandmother who was born in nineteen twenty-two. She was born post Spanish Flu encephalitis, and her children were born right before the polio outbreak. My grandmother recounted often her fears of her children getting sick and dying. Her neighborhood was spared mostly. Unfortunately, her neighbor Kenny Richardson developed polio. Now Kenny made it through and lived, but I remember as a young girl watching Kenny. He was disfigured from his disease. He was unable to walk correctly. His arm was drawn to his body. His speech was slow. I'm terrified that there is a generation forgetting what it was like before vaccination requirements. We are deeply concerned about what it will be like should we lift vaccination requirements. My son will never know what it's like to have the shingles virus. He will never know what it's like to itch from chickenpox because of medical technology. And while chickenpox isn't necessarily going to kill anybody, polio is. And we really need to consider our children's safety and well-being. Thank you so much, and have a great day.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next, we have Susan Parsons to speak on the issue of truth.
Hello, I'm Susan Parsons. I'm a Sunday School teacher at Valley Christian Assembly of God. I'm reading the Bible, the Book of John. The theme is Jesus, the Son of God. Date of writing is eight between eighty and ninety-five A.D. "In the beginning was the Word, and the Word was with God, and the Word was God. The same was in the beginning with God. All things were made by Him, and without Him was not anything made that was made. In Him was life, and the life was the light of men, and the light shineth in darkness, and the darkness comprehended it not. There was a man sent from God, whose name was John. The same came for a witness to bear witness of the light, that all men through Him might believe. He was not that light, but was sent to bear witness of that light. That was the true light, which lighteth every man that cometh into the world. He was in the world, and the world was made by Him, and the world knew Him not. He came unto His own, and His own received Him not. But as many as received Him, to them gave He power to become the sons of God, even to them that believeth in His name, which were born not of blood, nor of the will of flesh, nor of the will of man, but of God. And the Word was made flesh and dwelt among us, and we beheld His glory, the glory as the only begotten of the Father, full of grace and truth. John bare witness of Him and cried, saying, 'This was He of whom I spake. He that cometh after me is preferred before me, for He was before me, and of His fullness have all we received, and grace for grace. For the law was given by Moses, but grace and truth came by Jesus Christ. No man has seen God at any time, the only begotten Son, which is in the bosom of the Father. He has declared Him, and this is the record of John, when the Jews sent priests and Levites from Jerusalem to ask Him, 'Who art thou?' And he confessed, denied, but confessed, 'I am not the Christ.' Bless you in Jesus' name.
Thank you, ma'am.
Our next delegation is Anita Nellis to speak on the issue of vaccines.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to express my gratitude for upholding West Virginia's strong immunization policies. As a recently retired Canola County School Nurse and current Board Member of the Canola Charleston Health Department, I take community health seriously. The majority of society has the luxury of not remembering pre-vaccine fear, the stress of worrying about polio, meningitis, and other debilitating diseases. We have seen the statistics regarding the recent measles outbreak and should be proud that we are not one of the forty-two states that have reported cases and or outbreaks. We must keep our guard up and defend our current policies, which have protected our children and communities. It is our responsibility to listen to the experts. The American Academy of Pediatrics Committee on State Government Affairs recently updated the policy on medical and non-medical exemptions. These policy statements are research and clinically based and recommend eliminating non-medical exemptions, exactly what West Virginia has in state code. This allows for the safest environment for our children in schools. High rates of immunity help disrupt the spread of disease. When there are dips in immunization rates, preventable diseases can occur. Our state legislature voted to maintain our high standards, and I thank you for upholding the law.
Thank you, ma'am.
The next delegation is Kate Waldeck, M.D., on vaccinations.
Hi, my name is Dr. Kate Waldeck. I'm a pediatric critical care doctor, and I came here to do a few things. So one is to speak out in support of your upholding of our vaccine law here in West Virginia. Um, I did my pediatric residency in California during the years of their very lax vaccine laws, which resulted in that large measles outbreak. And if you've seen the news recently, one of the children who did get measles from that outbreak, who was too young to be vaccinated, recently died of pan-schlerosing, um, or sclerosing Panencephalitis, which is a fatal post-measles complication. Uh, we used to think this was pretty rare, um, but it turns out in especially young infants, it can be as frequent as one in six hundred. Um, in this case, the outbreak was actually about a hundred and fifty people or less, but we still saw this complication. Um, I'm a relatively young Peds Critical Care Doctor. I have practiced mostly in the post-vaccine era. But I can tell you that I have heard from my mentors about what life was like, especially before the Hib vaccine. Um, the way that they talk about it is the kids walked in with a headache and then they died. Um, often they would die on the table getting a lumbar puncture. Um, you have a florid bacterial meningitis that results in brain swelling that is so severe that it compresses the brain stem and stops the heart. Um, this would happen, uh, like I said, very, very rapidly. Uh, with vaccination, with the Hib vaccination, the efficacy is is close to ninety-nine percent, which is great. But we are actually seeing typeable H flu in the U.S. Now there is a child that died from it um in in the United States this year. So I really am here to speak about, we talk a lot about the viruses with vaccines, but really there are bacterial vaccines that are truly essential to to protecting the health of our children, especially those who are young, like infants, um, as well as the non-responders in the community, which usually you don't know who you are. And so I just want to applaud you for upholding this law, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, our final delegation is Del Lee with West. Strange days indeed.
Thought I would, uh, quote a little John Lennon song there. "These strange days indeed." Morning, President Horstie, Superintendent Blatt, members of the board. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Thank you also for standing strong and helping battle this to ensure that our students, our educators, and our families are safe in West Virginia. I know it's, uh, tough at times to to do what's right, but the right thing is always the right thing to do. So thank you for that. For Board Member Sullivan, if this is your last one, thank you for your service for all the the time that you've been here. And, uh, you have done remarkable work on the board, and we're we're going to miss you if this is your indeed your last one. For the rest of the board members, I would, uh, again say that let's all join together and promote the positives of of public education in West Virginia. There are too many good things happening in West Virginia to let a single group sideline us from talking about how good our public schools really are. And when I go around the state and and speak, I always accent the the positives about our CTE programs, our child nutrition programs, our our, um, uh, scores really on the ACT tests, which are in the top twenty-five in the nation, believe it or not. And, uh, the fact that we were fifth in the nation in the increase since COVID. So those are the positive things that that we need to be talking about. My final request in my last fourteen seconds is that, uh, I know the second month report will be coming out. I know that there are vacancies across the state, positions that haven't been filled yet by certified teachers. I would request that as soon as that report comes out, that I get a copy of that so that we can continue to work together to fight for a better public education and the saviors of public education. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Reeves is here. Billy Reeves is here from Verdenville Elementary. You may come to them.
All right. So going over the reports that you guys had on the Verdenville closure, I noticed a bunch of inconsistencies. We're going to start with the timeline here. The initial slip occurred April the eighth, twenty twenty-five. American Geotech Engineers conducted a site visit April tenth, twenty twenty-five during a light rain shower. Report states no obvious or apparent damage to the structure was noted aside from some mud splatter. That was verbatim. Also sitting in, uh, stating in the report, based on our observations of the lower rock cut slope and upper slope area below the water tank, we did not observe evidence that a large failure was imminent to this slope, but is closed for emergency closure. Staff returned to school April twenty-eighth and students April twenty-ninth. American Geotech email sent May the first stated, "American Geotech completed the final inspection for Phase One Slip-Rock Fall Mitigation Procedures at Verdenville Elementary School on April the thirtieth." So our children were sent to the school before you even received a final inspection. The final inspection was performed in the midday hours following an overnight heavy rainstorm. May the sixth, twenty twenty-five Williamson Shriver Architects Incorporated, Phase Two Proposal Budget, overinflated twelve thousand to remove plywood. It isn't even there. Fifteen thousand to remove barriers. Why not leave them in place if you think it's that unsafe? Twenty-five thousand for miscellaneous modifications. Building evaluation was completed June the sixth by Williamson Shriver Architects Incorporated, Arrow Engineering and Harper Engineering. Email dated July twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. There is a cover page to that email not disclosed publicly. And in it states, "In this evaluation, the design team discusses the existing conditions of the school with recommendations for immediate projects and other projects to be implemented on a later date." Nothing about structure, nothing about safety. In that same email, reports, "A limited number of these glass blocks have been broken. There was only one. It shows it in the reports you have and the pictures I have as well. But window replacement on the budget is ten thousand for a window for a total of a hundred and forty thousand with many other inconsistencies."
Thank you, sir.
There are no other delegations.
Thank you, Ms. Day. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, uh, I'm going to deviate for a moment away from our agenda, if the board will afford me that luxury. Uh, next would be Superintendent Blatt and her department reports, but, uh, I'm pretty old school, as most of you all know me, and I believe if you are led to say something, that you need to say it. And, um, that's just the way I was raised, and that's what I intend to do today. And I'm going to talk about two things real fast. That there are severe misconceptions in the state of West Virginia about today. And I s- I find it ironic that today the board members receive their new copies of the Western Code. This is the West Virginia Law Book that governs public education. We all got a shiny new copy today, and we'll use this more in a minute, I promise you. There is a real misconception amongst the voters and the general public in the state of West Virginia of what that book actually is and who the actual author of that book is. Ladies and gentlemen, I assure you, the author of that book is not the West Virginia Board of Education, nor the West Virginia Department of Education. This is a book of school law created by legislators past, present, and hopefully in the future, right across the way. Every law in this book was passed by a legislature, a bicameral legislature. Not this board, not the department. And I'll, if I get anything out today, and if I have to keep going through this presentation every month, I will, to the point of ad nauseam, I will do that, because I don't think the public understands. And I was hesitant about making these remarks this morning, but last night before I went to bed, I read an, I read an editorial, a column in the Charleston Gazette by a lady from Randolph County that was talking about the potential closure of their schools in that county. Heart-wrenching. Breaks your heart. Terrible situation. And the closure was happening because of under-enrolled buildings in that particular district. And they were seeking solutions. They were looking for answers. And in a normal progression, they come to this board when it comes time for closures and consolidation. But yet we, as a board, are very limited in the relief that we can provide for them. So where does that relief need to and have to come from? Right across the way. There's a hundred and thirty-four members of the legislature. They have the oversight. They have the ability to change the school aid formula to recognize these rurally challenged, geographically challenged areas that we speak of. They have that ability. I and this board and this department do not. So I want to stop right there for now with respect to this codebook. I'll come back to it momentarily. The second thing, over the past decade, I have witnessed a fundamental change in the legislative process, all in the name of school choice. How many times have you heard, every time you turn on a news channel, they talk in a positive light about school choice? School choice, school choice, school choice. And I want to qualify upfront. I am not against school choice. I think school choice is a wonderful thing. I have family members, for full disclosure, and I have mentioned this, that have taken advantage of the Hope Scholarship to make that school choice. That's my family's decision. I honor it. I'll stand by it. But what has been the orchestrator of this school choice in West Virginia? I'm going to go back to two thousand and fourteen, and I'm going to focus my comments on this past decade, basically. The American Legislative Council, Alec. They are the ones that proposed the school choice model and playbook for West Virginia and other states throughout the land. And they make no bones about what they're trying to accomplish. And again, I'm not just beating on Alec. Alec does a lot of wonderful things in the business community that I support wholeheartedly. But on public education, I think they played a little heavy-handed, and they've got some unintended consequences from their actions. They make it perfectly clear, and you've got to remember, this is a business community that's come together to create this playbook, and they feel like the only way that they can accomplish what they want to do is to decimate public education. And how do you do that? You do it financially. If you bankrupt the school system, change can occur. That's why you see this staggering decline in enrollment in West Virginia. In the past decade, we have lost over thirty-five thousand students in public education, all in the name of school choice. And again, I understand the choice part. And the legislature has made a lot of changes to this book to incorporate the school choice model. They've made no changes to the funding cycle. They've made no changes to Chapter eighteen A, which causes a public school system to have to operate like a business, but operate like a business without the ability to effectively manage your workforce. No changes made there. So you see where I'm going with this. The financial instability of the system continues to grow and continues to grow and gets worse and worse. And I knew I was on the right track this morning. I woke up at four A.M., got a cup of coffee, clicked on Metro News, and I saw an article from the Superintendent in Barber County who talked about he is facing school consolidation for the same reasoning, reasoning being he has under-enrolled buildings. He can't meet his economies of scale, financial reasons. All because that's the way the school law of West Virginia has been designed to operate. No changes have been made. Nothing has been done to accommodate this hemorrhage in education loss. So this has been systematic. We've got a Hope Scholarship. And again, being perfectly honest and for full disclosure, I have family members who have children that utilize the Hope Scholarship. It's a good thing. But it has no guardrails. The cost has grown exponentially, out of control, and members of the legislature privately told me that, hey, this has gotten too big, too fast, and we can't control it. But they have no remedy. What else has Hope done? What Hope has done, it's taken our best and brightest and gave them other opportunities to go somewhere and seek other forms of education. And again, that's fair. But what has it left us in the public system? It's left us those children that are socially, economically, developmental. They have those disabilities. They have those challenges. It's left us the toughest to try to educate. And we'll take that challenge head-on, but it's hard. It is very expensive to provide the services for those children. You can see where I'm going with this. It's a hand that has been dealt to public education that I do not think is fair. And I'm sick and tired of letting this going, and when the community reaches out to you on Facebook and you say, you know what, I go over there and take this issue on, I'm against consolidation. Well, your actions don't prove that. Your actions prove everything but that. It's not fair to do people that way. This is their livelihoods you're dealing with. Don't get on there and make idle comments on social media. If you come in front of this board, we're getting ready to take a snapshot of the second month enrollment. We're going to do that on Friday. We'll have the results in three weeks to see how many more children we have hemorrhaged from our enrollment numbers. And I think the number will be quite large. And then closures will start in respective counties, and they'll come before this board. And what is our charge here? To basically make sure that the county that's trying to stay solvent, that's doing the best they can, adhere to the policies and procedures in this book with regards to the closure process. That's all. Not to reign and have dominion over them and tell them they're wrong. We are to adhere and make sure they follow the process in this book of laws that they created, not me. I don't think the public understands how the game is played and how the hand has been dealt, but I hope today they learn. And I'm going to close with this. I believe a picture is worth a thousand words. I don't want you to take my opinion on anything with regards to school choice. School choice, there's nothing wrong with it, but the choices have to be fair and equitable. Let's look at what is required of public education. This book here, Dakota, West Virginia, all laws created by legislature. This here is what we call the Green Book. Every year, there's about two hundred to two hundred and fifty bills introduced at the legislature. The ones that pass and become law are the Green Book. This is a template given to every county of what to expect and what to work from with the new laws. So here's the last five years' Green Books. Two thousand and nineteen, the West Virginia Legislature passed the Omnibus Education Bill promoting charter public schools. Fine. That's another school choice option. I wonder how many laws apply to public charter school. Ladies and gentlemen, all the laws that govern public charter schools can be found on one and a half pages, this eight and a half by eleven sheet of paper. That's it. Now, public charter schools answer to her and the department, but guess what? They don't have to answer to this. They don't hire with this. They don't run their buildings like this, their physical plants like this. All they have to do is satisfy a page and a half of rules and regulations. Don't take, I I want you all to fact-check me, too. Don't take my opinion for nothing. Let's deal with the facts, and then you go over there and ask them why. and then you go over there and ask them why. And I'll take the heat across the street. I used to be one of them. The public deserves the truth. Let's put the truth where it's at. Now, let's go to the homeschool model. Homeschool. And mind you now, homeschool gets public dollars through this Hope Scholarship. All the requirements of homeschool can be placed on this index card. That's it. No oversight, no regulation, no nothing. They tried to pass the bill this year to make, you didn't even have to have a high school diploma to teach homeschool, but luckily that failed. You do have to have a high school diploma, I still think. And I look, I'm not trying to pick a fight, but I am sick and tired of legislators going and piling on this board, piling on this department, telling us how wrong we are, and we shouldn't close these schools. You all made the law, not I. This is what you made for public charters. This is what you made for homeschool. Ladies and gentlemen, you tell me, are the options fair and equitable? Which one is designed to fail, and which one is not? Now legislature, I don't expect to get Christmas cards from any of you, and that's fine. If you all want to seek a solution, I'll be a willing partner. This board will be a willing partner. This department will be a willing partner. But I'm gonna tell you now, if you're not willing to get into the school aid formula and Chapter eighteen A, don't waste my time and don't waste your time. Because that's the only two places that you can get in this book and find fixes that are substantive and that will last and that will save all three options. The choice is yours. And if I have to go through this presentation at every meeting to prove my point, I am prepared to do so. I'm not running for office. There's a hundred and seventeen of them will sign up in January to run again. And they're gonna tell you what all they're gonna do for you and your community. Make them show you. Now, is public education perfect? No, it's not. Do we make a lot of mistakes? Yes, we do. We have the best option, ours is free. We try every day to make it more competitive. But you gotta level the playing field. This assault on public education by Alec and the people that follow Alec has got to stop. Go look at Project Twenty Twenty Five, that's their latest initiative. Don't take my word for nothing. You fact-check everything I said today, and if I told you any falsehood, I'll apologize to you, but I don't think I have. I have given you the facts. The choice is up to you whether you accept the facts and want to do something about it or not. And I thank you for your time. Next on our agenda is Department Reports, Superintendent Black.
Thank you. Unfortunately, we'd had to cancel our meeting last month, and that's when we released our West Virginia Balance Scorecard results. And we're going to talk about those a little later and how they apply to our accountability system. But I do want to highlight a few things that have, um, that is there to celebrate on what our public schools have done and the hard work that's taken place in our counties, in our schools. Um, when you look at our Balance Scorecard, eighty-six percent of our districts improved in their English Language Arts Performance Indicator. Eighty-three percent of our districts improved in the Mathematics Performance Indicator. And we saw a seventy, excuse me, seventy-six percent reduction in our Chronic Absenteeism Measure. So the hard work is taking place out in our counties and our schools, and we want to celebrate that, and we didn't get that opportunity, um, this past month. Also, one of the assessments that we use is the NOCTI, and this is our career and technical um, assessment that we use for our students that take the various industry and career pathways. And when we look at those programs, this is a national exam that's created by the professionals in the field. And sixty-eight percent of our CTE students met or exceeded the proficiency goal, or the proficiency score, um, to pursue the career that they had just completed that coursework for. And that was a four percent increase of our students from last year. And then just this past week, we had our meeting with College Board um, and learned that our students that took the Advanced Placement Test this past year increased the passage rate by six point four percent. So our Advanced Placement students are also, um, excelling and doing what they need to do. And so I just wanted to highlight a few of those as we talk about, um, the successes of our public schools and the work that's taking place. We have amazing teachers in our buildings and amazing staff. And I just also want to highlight a teacher we were able to recognize yesterday in Campbell County. Hugh Roberts teaches at the Campbell County Career and Technical Center. And it was exciting to be there, um, with Superintendent Hardesty and his team, and really celebrate Hugh. He won the Harbor Freight Tools for Schools Excellence in Teaching Award, one of five in the nation, and he received a one hundred thousand dollar check partial for him and then part for the school. And it was just a wonderful way to to start the day and to see the amazing work that's, that's taking place in our schools and see the excitement on the kids' faces and, um, so it was a great day. And then I have one additional report. Um, school safety is something that, uh, we did report on monthly and had kind of gotten away from and looked at, and we wanted to speak a little bit about that. Michael Whitlow and James Agee, uh, tag teamed this work depending on what the, uh, the topic is. And Mike and I were actually in Mason County yesterday at a school safety conference with a lot of our counties in that area and with the law enforcement officers that serve our schools, and Sam will turn it over to Mike.
Thank you, President Hardesty, Vice President Gabriel, Superintendent Black, members of the board. Um, as Superintendent Black mentioned, it was in Mason County, excuse me, Mason County yesterday. Uh, it was a great, um, sessions on school safety. They had a lot of work areas where people could talk about the problems they have and different issues they deal with. It's really kind of reassuring to see this group come together and talk and see how hard they work to keep our kids safe. Um, you know, the CSAND app has been active since, you know, the start of the school year. And there's been a lot on that, and you can imagine it's a pretty broad gamut of things that come in on that. Um, but they take them all seriously, you know, they investigate every single one of them, um, prioritize the things that are immediate threats, and it's really cool to see how they work together to keep everybody safe. Uh, my topic on that session was school mapping, um, which brings me to a little bit of an update on that House Bill three one six six, the school mapping that's required by September first of twenty-six. Um, so about twenty counties have submitted and in the grant process to receive their funds to get that mapping done. So after a couple of months, it's a pretty good push of, of getting those done, and we'll continue to, you know, send out reminders to make sure people meet that deadline. Um, so it's a good process to get those maps done. Uh, that's one of the things that we talked about at the session yesterday. It was how important it is to have those consistent floor plans that give critical information to first responders. So be excited to have that finished group of maps that everybody can work from. Um, is there any questions on school safety?
Questions of the board, Ms. Sullivan.
Just a quick question, and, and thank you. The school mapping is being done by folks hired by the counties to come in.
Yes, ma'am, yeah.
What, you know, you mentioned, what was it, House Bill thirty-one sixty-six? Was there money included in that bill to support the counties?
Yes, I think about two point nine million dollars was appropriated.
Good, I'm glad to hear that. Great, thank you.
Further questions?
Dr. Stanbury. Thanks, sir. Uh, Mr. Whitlow, one of the things that, uh, went live this year was obviously the cell phone ban. Um, one of the concerns I think that was addressed when we started talking about that was school safety, um, how our kids are able to report things, or what would happen if there was a, you know, a safety issue in the school and they didn't have their phone, et cetera. Have you guys looked at that and have found that the schools have found ways to address those, uh, concerns with their kids and parents?
Uh, there's several ways to report things. I know several counties are going to different devices that, um, panic devices and different options. We definitely can talk to more counties and see how that's occurring in the field.
I know that, yeah, I can just add that, um, Drew McLeanahan has been working with several of the counties, and they've got, they're all kind of doing it a little bit different. Some of them have like the locked boxes that they're putting the phones in, some just have the little, um, pocket folders in the back of the room. Um, but I think they've all worked with parents and have stipulations in place that, you know, if there's medical reasons. For example, our diabetics, a lot of their testing just goes to the phone, and those are allowed, and and they've been able to work out different things with individual students.
Any further questions? Thank you, my friend.
I'll just add that one of the things we talked about yesterday at the school safety conference and that I highlighted was we really need to look at four areas when we talk about school safety. A lot of times we talk about just like we hear about the shootings and things like that, but that physical safety is one issue. Um, we highlighted a lot on the cybersecurity and the attacks and things that we get on our, our computers and our software. And then we spent some time talking about the, kind of the third and fourth element of school safety, which is the mental health needs of our students and the school climate, and how if we have an environment that students feel safe and secure in, and the teachers feel supported, and that they can talk to each other, that we've seen that that would prevent a lot of the things that we're dealing with. And so as Mike had said, it was a, a good afternoon, um, yesterday in Mason County with, with a lot of the counties in that region represented. President Hardesty, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
It's been moved by Ms. White, second by Dr. Stanbury. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion carries.
Mr. Hardesty, I'm sorry to interrupt. I have a, a question.
Sure.
No, 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 that's all right.
Sure, go ahead.
At, at our last meeting in August, when we were all present, I remember that we had our, we, we had a, a statement read at that time that said we were going to ask our, our lawyer to, um, draft a letter to the Charter School Board about the vaccination issue. Um, remember, they, they didn't, you know, they wanted to allow religious exemptions, and we were coming out on the other side, and I was just wondering if we could get a quick update.
Can provide it, and then if, uh, if our General Counsel wants to weigh in, but we did, um, we did provide the letter and to my knowledge, did not receive anything back from that. Is that accurate?
I, I know that a letter went. I don't know what response, if any, we got. I didn't see any response.
Yeah, I've not seen any response from the Professional Charter School Board. I know that Mr. Kelly has had several conversations with individual schools, and I think their individual charter schools are, many are not accepting religious exemptions.
And, and that's good to hear, but I think that, uh, the Charter School Board is under the auspices or jurisdiction of this board. And, um, I, I'd like to think that there would be some formal action taken on their part to inform you and us what they did as what, you know, as a group. Um, so I'd just say that.
Point well taken. Next is new business. Approval of the Western Board of Education meeting schedule through August of two thousand and twenty-six. Uh, you can see that in the attachment. Uh, is there a motion to approve that meeting schedule?
So moved.
They've moved by Mr. Wooton. Second, Mr. Dunleavy, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Next is the Annual County Board of Education Accountability Report. Ms. Croner, good morning.
Annual Approval Status and Accreditation Report. To ensure each county board of education provides a thorough and efficient education for its students, county scorecards and efficiency profiles are reviewed and approval statuses are determined annually based on multiple measures of student performance and county operational efficiency. Operational efficiency indicators are determined by different offices at the department based on multiple measures, and statuses are defined as either meets requirements or needs assistance. This year, nearly half of all counties met requirements for all the operational effectiveness indicators. However, transportation, finance, county board of education member effectiveness, and facilities were common areas in which counties were designated as needing assistance. These counties will be required to create and implement a corrective action plan to address identified operational challenges. The West Virginia Balance Scorecard indicators are based on student performance and success. Counties are identified as on watch, support, or intensive support based on three consecutive years of district level accountability data. Identified districts will work with the department to implement and monitor improvement plans and receive targeted technical assistance. Those districts in intensive support will report progress quarterly to the Office of Accountability. Math achievement was the most frequently flagged indicator across all categories, especially in the intensive support category. Altogether, there are twenty-seven districts in the state identified for the math achievement indicator. There was a reduction in the number of counties that were identified for ELA achievement between two thousand and twenty-four and two thousand and twenty-five. Seven districts are identified this year as either on watch or support for ELA achievement. Attendance, um, is still featured prominently in both the on watch and support designations. However, nineteen of the twenty districts identified as support for attendance in two thousand and twenty-four showed a reduction in chronic absenteeism this year. Overall, the average rate of chronic absenteeism statewide has declined from twenty-nine point oh eight in two thousand and twenty-two to twenty-two point seven six in two thousand and twenty-five. Post-secondary achievement and on track to graduation are also recurring concerns, um, in student performance. And I know that there are plans underway to address that here at the department with the high schools in order to, um, address those ongoing issues. And with that, I'll entertain any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Questions, Ms. Croner, Ms. Sullivan.
Good morning, and thank you as always for, for your very good work. Good morning. It's always a, a pleasure to hear what you have to say. And of course, I have questions.
Sure.
Um, the definitions have not changed since last year. Is that true, or, uh, the definitions of meets requirement, needs assist, that it's still the same definition?
Um, those are determined by each department, and there have been some revisions over the years, but there has been no substantial difference, um, that, that would have taken any counties by surprise.
Okay. And, uh, you mentioned that the counties must develop an action plan and monitor the plan's implementation. Who monitors the action plan? Who does that monitoring?
If there, if there is a, um, county operational effectiveness indicator that's identified as needs assistance, then the office that manages that work will work with them to develop that action plan based on their specific needs. If it's one of the balance scorecard, then they will work with the county leadership team with input of us, with our input, depending on, um, which stage of that accountability that they're in, whether they are um, on watch or support or intensive support, and our involvement becomes, um, more extensive as they move through multiple years of not making adequate progress.
Okay. And how often does, do department people check in with the counties on these things?
Um, that is an ongoing process. Um, if they are identified in intensive support, then it's at least quarterly, but I know that we're monitoring all the data that we have available and working with our counties consistently to, to try to improve.
Okay. And what specific kinds of supports are offered?
Um, as an example, I know that we've worked very extensively with reduction of chronic absenteeism, working with attendance works and, um, developing cohorts through the Strive Initiative to, um, try to get the messaging out about how that chronic absenteeism affects students, how it's different from the daily attendance rate, and really putting supports in place through communities and schools and other supports in order to remove those barriers that keep kids from coming to school.
Wonderful. And with the, uh, operational effectiveness indicators of efficiency, what has there been, or what is the progress that's been made in making those indicators more qualitative and less check the box?
We are in the process of consistent, we're always refining, we're always improving those things. And when we're looking at, um, you know, those indicators that we have identified right now, we really want to make those more actionable and more data-driven. And we have met, um, and, and there's a conversation that has been ongoing about how we can really make sure that that information is useful to counties and useful in us in being proactive in identifying problems sooner.
And thank you. And, and one thing that might, it's for you to consider. It might be worthwhile to have some way of, when, when board members and others look at this report, to see what progress has been made one year to the next. Cause I look at this and I see, you know, somebody that's on watch for math progress. Well, were they on that last year too? You know, that kind of thing. So maybe that's something you too? You know, that kind of thing. So maybe that's something you could look at.
That is in the works. Um, I'm glad you brought that up because that reminded me to, to let everyone know that, um, you know, last year I presented to this board the dashboard that we had developed, um, based on this report. And we are looking at doing a multiple year trajectory for each county in each one of those indicators so that you can see that there is progress. And it also is a, um, a very easy way for counties and, and the public to know how far away from the target that, that they were. And, and so you can, you can easily gauge how close a county came to meeting standard.
That's important. The, 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 uh, the last page I find most interesting, and that has to do with charter schools. Um, in the, in the, uh, indicators of efficiency, you know, it says that the charter public school board is really, um, in charge of that. And I, and I understand that. I don't agree with it, but I understand it. Um, they're dealing with money as part of what they do. And they get 99% of a per pupil allocation out of the current year budget, a county's current year budget. It's gone. Um, money, you know, as we know, as we look at the county, it's a real issue. So I, and going back to a previous statement that the charter public school board is under the auspices of the state board of education, would it not seem that these, that the charter school board should put together a report for this board that details their progress on all these indicators? Such as finance and, you know, uh, um, I assume they have boards maybe in their charter schools. I don't know. Um, their attendance, facilities, the, the safety of their facilities, the ones that have facilities. Um, you know, there, there are, I don't know how many children. I guess we won't know till October 2nd or 3rd or three weeks from now, how many children are in charter schools, but last year I think it was 3,400. And 80 some percent of those children were online. And then we get into the next section, the balanced scorecard. Um, and we don't have data because they don't have three years of data, but I think by now they should have three years of data. Some of these schools that have been in existence since 22. Um, I know the Morgan, I mean, there, there are, there are schools.
Yeah, I was just gonna add, yeah, the balanced scorecard, which we would have shown last month.
Okay.
There's actually data, they're, how they're doing as far as proficiency, attendance and progress.
But that's not reflected in this, in this report. And, um, you know, I, I question whether or not it actually could be for some of the schools. But just to go back to, you know, I, I think this board deserves more data from the charter school board on the, um, uh, the process that's going on. And so I, that's just a suggestion. All right.
Ms. Croner, uh, for the record, would you read the contents of this box for the medias?
Charter public schools are accountable for West Virginia balanced scorecard indicators of student performance and success. County operational effectiveness indicators of efficiency do not apply.
Would you read the last line one more time?
County operational effectiveness indicators of efficiency do not apply.
Ladies and gentlemen, what I showed you a while ago about the rules and regulation for some that don't apply to the others, case in point. Don't take Paul's word for it. Deal with the facts. They are held to a different standard by design. And again, I don't want to keep beating a dead horse, but I do not think the public accurately understands how unlevel the playing field is. Thank you, Ms. Croner.
Thank you.
With that, is there a motion to accept the report and issue the designated approval status to each county board of education as indicated therein?
So moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Gabriel. He's here. Is there a second? Second, Ms. Sullivan. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Next, we need to enter into executive session. No wonder why. Is, is there a motion?
I move. We enter into executive session. Turn it on. Under the attorney client privilege exception authorized by West Virginia Code 69A3 for discussion of item C on the agenda.
You've heard the motions. There are seconds. Second, Mr. Dunleavy. All in favor, signify by saying aye. We are in executive session at 9:56 a.m.
Was taken during executive session. Next on the agenda, is there a motion to approve the West Virginia Board of Education? Personnel matters. Been moved by Ms. Sullivan.
Second.
Second of Mr. Gabriel, all in favor, but signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there now a motion to approve the Western Department of Education personnel matters included in the attachments?
So moved.
Been moving Mr. Wooton.
Second.
Second, Mr. Gabriel, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And carries. Before we go to West Virginia Board Member updates and requests for information, the Chair would like to recognize Ms. Sullivan.
Yep. Knowing me as you do, you'll not be surprised that I've written down what I want to say. You know how I am about words. I like them to be specific and well articulated. When I was appointed to this board in 2017, I knew what an important responsibility it would be. And I've never taken that responsibility lightly. I believed that in my background in public and private schools, in rural and urban settings in West Virginia and other states, as parent, teacher, principal, central office, and State Department education employee and researcher would give me a broad perspective. Early on, I received advice that shaped my time on the board. A lawyer with years of experience dealing with our state constitution volunteered to school me in the constitutional authority of the board, its meaning and its impact. Another lawyer, actually someone who spent a great deal of time representing counties and lawsuits, advised me to read everything on the agenda. I took their advice seriously and have spent countless hours poring over consent and business items and all the attachments. I read them out of duty, but also with interest, curiosity, and even joy. I've asked a lot of questions during our meetings and I don't apologize for doing so. I was asking on behalf of students and staff in our schools for parents and communities. I asked questions that I believe the public might want answered to clarify what was under discussion or to offer different ways of looking at things. And I have gained much through my service. I've had the wonderful opportunity to work with a revolving group of board members with different backgrounds and perspectives. I have felt free to express myself, believing that a strong board respects differing viewpoints. I've worked besides State Department employees at all levels and have been impressed with their dedication, knowledge, and attitude. I've listened to our delegations from the public and used their input and ideas to inform my work on the board. I have visited classrooms and seen some truly magnificent teaching. I've attended staff development sessions and principals' meetings and stakeholder policy review sessions and interacted with teacher and principal association leaders, superintendents, teachers administrators, and county board members. And my life is all richer for these interactions. Schools feel like home to me. Being in them and around the people who are involved within gives me hope for our children and our state. Yes, we have challenges, but schools should never be viewed as the problem. They define our future and should be given the credit they deserve. Public schools are the bedrock of our communities and they will continue to be. They will continue to enroll children from all backgrounds with a single purpose in mind, to raise up the next generation of responsible, productive, engaged citizens who can make their way in the world. We can all do better in whatever it is we do in life. It's easy to criticize, but I can tell you from experience that working in schools is a roller coaster ride. Each day brings new challenges and opportunities, few of which can be predicted. The overwhelming majority of school employees deserve our thanks and respect. We need more good people to join their ranks. It is painful to watch the methodical unraveling of support for public schools, which is contrary to the constitutional promise to our children of a thorough and efficient education. It is painful to watch counties grapple with the hard problems of doing more with less. It is painful to watch programs get cut, staff laid off, and schools consolidate and close. I had hoped to see momentum toward addressing these issues during my time on the board, but it's going to take a radical shift in perspective at the state level. I'm still hopeful that will happen. This board makes decisions that impact schoolchildren and staff every day. If the State Board of Education doesn't stand up for them, who will? I'm grateful for the opportunity, have served West Virginia in this important role. I've been asked what I plan to do next. I don't know exactly what directions my path will take, but I know that I will continue to be involved with schools and the push for what can be done to give our children the best opportunities imaginable. And I will continue to ask my questions.
With that, Ms. Sullivan, I don't know where to start. You've been a tremendous asset to this board. Most of the time, we agree on issues, sometimes we don't, but that's healthy. There's nine people on this board. Each of the nine has a different perspective and brings a different skill set to the table, and I think that's healthy. You're going to be sadly missed. Your attention to detail. I even now catch myself when I send a text to try to make sure it's punctual and grammatically correct because I did not want to feel that wrath, and that's a good thing. You've had a glorious career in education. You've been very successful on every level. And I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for what you've done for the children of West Virginia and what you're going to continue to do for the children of West Virginia. Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Justice.
Well, I met Deborah probably eight years ago. Met her over at the mansion one day. I hadn't met her before. She was just like she is now, so engaged in everything, loves children, loves education. And she has just been a true friend, will always be a true friend, always. And her help and contributions to communities and schools has been wonderful. She's been a real supporter and a backbone of that. And we love you and miss you and we'll see you around a lot, okay? All right.
Mr. Gabriel. You know, it might have been about eight years ago or so when I first met Deborah. I was on the SBA and she'd come over to the SBA. You know, I don't know how to describe Deborah other than to say that, first of all, she cares about kids. Kids are her number one priority. And the other thing is, it's in her heart. She cares enough because she loves the kids and she wants a right. Thank you.
Other comments? Mr. Dunleavy.
Deborah, I just want to thank you for all your service you give to this board and to the public. And I've had the pleasure of serving with you for several years now, and I'm not the door that old, but anyways, thank you for everything you have done for us in the state. Thank you.
That's why.
Deborah, I will miss you as well, but I know that we can call on you anytime if we need something punctuated, something proofread or formatted. No. Your vast knowledge and your heart goes into everything that you do, I believe. And you have made me a better board member by making sure that I read everything before I get here too and understand it. And your questions are always on point and bring out some of the points that we are not even thinking of. So, miss you. Thank you.
Dr. Stansbury.
Deborah, it's been a pleasure to serve with you the last few years, for the last six months since your seat made here. It's been nice to be on this side of the table with you. I know from day one, I was impressed by your level of organization and the thoughtfulness of your questions and found myself not having to ask many questions because you already asked them and we were able to get that information out before I even needed to raise my hand, so I always appreciate that. But yeah, your passion for education and wanting to see things done right just exudes from you and I hope that you do continue to stay involved and look forward to seeing you around the building here and obviously come back to the meetings and visit. Absolutely. Get up there and give us your two minutes. But thank you, Deborah.
Thank you.
Ms. Tlu.
Ms. Sullivan. I guess I only met you once I joined this board and I didn't know you. My first impression was, man, this lady asks a lot of questions. But then I then I started to realize, man, she asks a lot of good questions too, and questions that need to be asked and answered. And many times allowed me the luxury of not asking the question because you were already ahead of the curve. the question because you were already ahead of the curve. I've described you as formidable, and I mean that as a compliment. I think I told you that I think if you had been my principal somewhere along the way, I'd have been a better student, I'm sure of that. I think having served on this board with you, that hopefully I'm a better board member of that as well. And I wish you all the luck in the future, and maybe the governor will have the good sense to recognize at this critical moment, we need your sage advice and experience to deal with all the issues that are in front of us. But either way, good luck.
Thank you.
Enjoy.
Now, Ms. Sullivan, if you'd join us up here at the podium, we've got some things we'd like to share with you. Guys, come on over.
All your members can come ask me to get a picture. Right. Does he get anything? That's probably nice. Me.
I don't want to say too much without crying.
I won't be too late. I won't be late. I can get all the others. We should record. Yeah. We'll get a picture like this. We'll get a picture like this. Not yet. We need the back row, the whole row can kind of...
There we go.
Everybody ready? And one, two, three. One more thing. And one, two, three. Thank you.
You too.
I don't want to ask you to leave.
Oh. Okay. I'm watching. Send me some practice. Send you what? I'll do that.
Is this one of those, the Texas?
Yeah, the Texas. So, Ms. Sullivan, before you sit down, the Department of Education put together some things for you. We have a cutting board made at one of our CTE centers and some other gifts for fall, and some gift cards for reading in the capital market, because there was no way I was going to pick out a book that she had not read, so I figured a gift card to Taylor Books was perfect. But I appreciate Ms. Sullivan, when I came on seven and a half years ago, she kind of took me under her wing and helped me with policies, and we traveled the state a lot, visiting schools. She even packed my lunch a few times, so I appreciate that, but her heart is always with the children, and she has a legacy here at the department, because we have several employees that Ms. Sullivan was their principal when they were in school, and they all talk about the impact she had personally on their lives. So, thank you, Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you. Thank you. The department, it's been my joy to work with so many employees, from secretaries on it, good people, well intentioned, smart, hardworking, and so that's been a joy for me too. And so, I'm out there, you just have to...
I'll call you.
You'll call.
Thank you.
We'll start with Mr. Wooton.
Mr. Harasty, I would, again, like to compliment you on the way you started the meeting this morning. I thought your remarks were spot on, and I hope, you indicated that you might, but I hope that you will continue to invite the legislature to engage in a way that starts to look for solutions and stop playing the blame game. So, again, good job and keep it up.
Dr. Stansberry?
Thank you, Mr. Harasty. Nothing to report for me.
Ms. Sullivan?
And I would echo Mr. Wooton's comments. I know not only will President Harasty stand up, but all of you will, and I will be watching. My updates, as board representative, I attended the West Virginia Public Broadcasting Board Meeting and various executive session check-ins. I attended the Professional Teacher Preparation Standards Commission meeting, again, as your representative, and that's one of my favorite groups to meet with. I attended the Teacher of the Year and Service Personnel of the Year celebration, and that's always uplifting. But I think the most joyful thing I did, I spent time in classrooms advising teachers on how they could make simple adjustments that would reflect teacher effectiveness research findings, so that was fun.
Thank you. Mr. Rotruck?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to say, I didn't get a chance to say best wishes to Ms. Sullivan, but I did call her yesterday and we spoke for about an hour and a half, so she knows I really appreciate her so deeply. I did attend the West Virginia County School Board Association Standards Review meeting with Ms. White, that's one thing I got to do remotely. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Chancellor Tucker?
Nothing for me.
Ms. Justice?
Paul, you did a wonderful job starting the meeting, and I think with your word of spreading the word about our problems with the media helping you and everything, this is a wonderful idea, and I think it's wonderful to share the news in this way. I have a little uplift from Greenbrier County. I've been noticing these little signs stuck in people's yards all around the town, and it says "choice," and you know, I couldn't read below what it really said, but it's our county education, Board of Education Department, advertising to come to public school. And you know, I think it's a terrific idea, they're very tasteful, they look really good, there are a lot of private schools, or not a lot, but several in the area that are gaining a little momentum, and I think it's an excellent idea, I think it was really creative, and I'm going to put one in my yard. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dunleavy?
Paul, I want to thank you again for your presentation you gave to us this morning. It's just a shame, I hope, but that presentation you gave will get throughout the state of West Virginia, and I'm sorry to hear that some areas, we're not getting the information, so hopefully that'll improve, and when you make a presentation like that, I would hope everybody in the state of West Virginia hears it. Thank you, Deborah, again, for doing everything you do. That's all.
Ms. White?
Yes, sir. Kudos, again, echoing everyone else's comments. That was a fabulous presentation, and I think we should continue opening our meetings with things such as that, and putting children first, absolutely, always. I had the pleasure of attending the Education Alliance Board Meeting virtually, and the West Virginia Public Education Collaborative, both fabulous organizations. But as Mr. Rotruck mentioned, the Training Standards Review Committee that met, planning the county board members' updates and training sessions, there's one coming up on November 15th, and the focusing on State Board of Education circumstance reviews and interventions, they want to use that to be proactive as they speak to county board members, and we are especially putting emphasis on the fiscal and fiduciary responsibilities of county board members, and I'm working with a couple of our, well, Uriah Cummings from here in the department, and a couple of the school board treasures that I'm going to be meeting with later this month to help prepare the presentation, and I hopefully will be able to be there with them.
Mr. Gabriel?
I did attend the WVASA Superintendent's Association meeting in Fairmont there last week, and it was very, very good. I want to echo what everybody else said about Paul, it was great. I'm still trying to figure out how that stuff stayed on that rail without falling off. I'm really thinking somebody was on your side this morning. But anyway, I understand you're going to be on the radio tomorrow, is that true?
It appears that way.
Well, I hope everybody listens in, because we may get the same dose tomorrow, and I'm sure we will, no? Great, it was a great comment, they were all great comments, Paul, as usual. Thank you.
This time, nothing from the chair. Next on our agenda, as far as future meetings, the next regular scheduled meeting of this board, be held November 12th, 2025, here in Charleston, West Virginia. If there's no further business to come before the board, is there a motion adjourned?
So moved.
Been moved by Mr. Wooton, second by Ms. White, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.